Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Flunder.
Here.
Trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
And Trustee Townsend.
Present.
Right, thank you Peggy. Need approval of the agenda?
So moved.
You should have a couple of amendment sheets. You got to be sure you note the two amendments. Are you still good with the motion, Mr. Townsend? Mr. Townsend, your motion stand?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda.
Okay.
I'll talk slower. All right, item four, I need a motion for approval of the minutes for the May 21st, 2013 Board of Trustees meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion.
Question.
Question?
Peggy forgot to spell my name for it.
Her name is?
Are you kidding me?
It's gonna be worse.
It says F U N D E L.
Oh.
Slip out my ale.
In the minutes?
Where?
Please forgive us. We have sinned.
Because we know you're not the fun.
Really?
The question for approval of the minutes and amendments.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I need a motion for approval of the minutes of the May 29th, 13 Board of Trustees special meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, any question or comment? Names all spelled correctly? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Come time now for our audience to patrons and petitioners. Do we have anyone in the audience that would care to address the board? If you know the drill, please state your name and address for the record and welcome.
Good morning, I am Merle Bland, I live at 8311 Garfield Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas 66112. And I want to thank the trustees for the opportunity to address them. I have three items that I'd like to talk about that's in the handout that I gave you. This is annual budget time, as I'm sure you all know. Business West appreciates the fact that you were able to hold the line on property taxes last year, and we would encourage you to do that next year. We understand that there are necessary expenses that come with maintaining a quality institution. And if an increase is necessary, we would hope it would be consistent with the rate of inflation, which is no more than 2%. The second item I'd like to mention is that Business West was pleased to write a letter of endorsement as the college seeks a grant for the Creative Economy Project. And third, Business West would request an agenda item for the next meeting, and a proposed letter for your chairman's signature is attached. And this basically concerns the effort that Business West is involved with to put together a benefit district for State Avenue. As you know, the college trustees have approved that, and this is just a letter to the owners of the West State Plaza across the street where you have rented a space, just encouraging them to sign the petition.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Bland?
In regards to the letter that you're asking the chairman to sign, were there other considerations in regards to financing what you're wanting to do?
I'm not for sure.
There were no other options considered, this was the only one?
Well, you either sign, you either sign the petition or you don't sign the petition.
No, I'm talking about what we're be signing the petition for. It's asking for...
Oh, okay, okay. Well, the petition, the petition creates a benefit district along State Avenue, and we need 55% of the property owners by assessed valuation and by acreage. And we're about 55% there in terms of assessed valuation, and about 65% there in terms of acreage. So... What, basically what we're saying is we would like the owners of that center to be a team player. That's for the benefit of the community. That's, that in essence is what we're saying. And I have talked to President Givens about it, and I, Dawn and I have had a couple of conversations about it, and I've also discussed the matter with Darrell Winn.
Are we still attending in West State Plaza? What's that?
ESL.
You mean over here on?
No, we're Big Lots is.
Oh, six to the left?
No, no. We're Big Lots is.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's 76.
We're gathering support from other tenants in the center also. Westlake Hardware has written a letter of support as, and we're hoping to get letters from Big Lots and a couple of the other tenants.
Having been part of the development of the Business Improvement District in downtown Kansas City, Kansas, and then gone through this process of securing support, that, you know, there are entities that are taxed, the college is not one of those, but it's real important to have nonprofits and other industry, it's an entity support this, so. It's pretty much, it's kind of the same principle.
Yes, yes, well, downtown is what they call a schmied.
Yeah, it is.
And ours, it's not based on sales tax, ours is strictly based on sales tax. So, the college is, will be affected by the, the sales tax that it charges at bookstore and any other entity.
Yeah.
It, and that's, I mean, you don't pay property tax, but you do collect sales tax. And in that respect, you are an entity.
Yeah.
So we, we have approved already, you know, the, the benefit district, action and so forth. This is a letter to this particular tenant whom we rent space from to say, "We appreciate you being on the team with us." That's what he's asking me to sign.
Well, and, and your legal counsel said the way to do this is to have it as an action, as an action item, and a full discussion at a meeting, and then to take action accordingly. This is, today is just for information purposes.
Yes. In other words, we would put it on the agenda as an agenda item next month.
That's what I'm requesting.
And we vote that you want me to authorize, or you want to authorize me to, you know, sign this or not? That's what we would, as a board, decide.
That is the matter at hand, yes.
Okay. Any other question?
If we do it, I was gonna make a motion, Mr. Chairman, whether you want to wait till next month or do it now, so what the hell, let's do it now and get it out of the way. I'm supporting it all the way. I'll make a motion, is that effective if I'm in order, Mr. Chairman?
Counselor?
Well, it is in order, you can have the discussion now, and the board can take action. It's in an open meeting, you certainly have had an exchange back and forth. My question would be, other than just to get out of the way, then, then you can do that?
Then I'll put my motion on the table.
And it would be to approve the recommendation of the chairman?
I do.
Well, I'm looking at the chairman to confirm this is what you want?
That's correct.
All right, then, yes, take the action you desire for.
So we have a motion? I'll say it. And a second, is there any further question or discussion?
I guess I would just question, is there any other information we need? Seems to me like it's pretty cut and dried, but does any board member think there's something else we need to hear before we, before we vote on? Hearing none? Good?
Hearing none, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll sign it for you, Merle.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You need to come back, Merle.
Oh, we'd love to. We'll come back.
Okay, all right.
Appreciate your patience and working through the process there, Merle, all right?
Okay. Are there any other patrons or petitioners who care to address the board this morning? All right, seeing none, we'll move to communications.
None.
None, no communications, all right. And that brings us to item seven, the president's report. And I'll, trustees note that you have an amendment there.
I do. I'll do that last.
Yep.
And then I'll be done. Okay, the, Mr. Chair, the first thing, I'd like for Linda Sutton to give us an update on the graduation.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Linda Sutton, and I'm the, my job here at the college is Director of Student Activities, which is a part of the Student and Administrative Services. I'm going to just give you some recaps of the graduation that we had here in May of 2013. I view the graduation of our students as a milestone for the students, their families, the college, and the community as well. Without this community college, many of our students would not have access to higher education. Overall, those completing in December, May, and July, there was a total of 910 graduates. Of that 910, 374 actually attended the ceremony. From the feedback I got from students, the graduating students, their families, the administration, I believe that this ceremony was even more memorable because of some of the changes made. For example, this year we had the presentation of the colors by the Leavenworth High School ROTC Color Guard, which was a first for any KCKCC graduation. It added fanfare to the ceremony, and it set the tone for the occasion. An interesting fact about the Color Guard Commander, Raylene Gildner, she was a high school senior and also a dual enrolled student at KCKCC. Another impressive fact about the Color Guard, they all had final exams the next day at Leavenworth High School, but they made the commitment to be here and present at our ceremony. The advisor, Alan, SFC Alan Lowen, stated that they were honored to be here, and that they look forward to coming back next year. I have accepted that invitation, they will be presenting at our graduation next year on May 21st, 2014. Another addition that added fanfare was singing of the National Anthem. We've always had the National Anthem played, but this year it was sung. The student who sung that was a graduating student, Rashad Singleton, and he did an outstanding job. And he really set the bar high. So, the person that has to sing it next year really has to go strong to pass that. Thank you to Dr. Givens for making these suggestions for changes to our graduation. It added fanfare, you've started a new tradition that I'm sure will continue, you've started a legacy. Our graduation speaker, Alex, Elizabeth Alex, was well received. She is local, and she gives so much back to the community, even right here in Wyandotte County and the world. A challenge for next year is crowd control, as you could probably tell if you were looking out, we were beyond capacity. Another change that you may see for next year is the decorum. Where the DS is, behind the DS, we want to put a curtain back there to make it look more professional. And then this is something that's on my wish list, my dream list, and I don't want Mr. Bodie to fall out of his seat, but I want to see a large jumbo screen in the fieldhouse. So if you're all the way in the back, you can still see the ceremony. There are offices that are obviously in the forefront for the success of the graduation. There's the faculty, the admissions and records office, the student advising center, my office, the Office of Student Activities. But what you may not know is that it takes all employees to make graduation a success. There are many offices who are working behind the scene. To give you an example of the campus-wide involvement, the athletics department, buildings and grounds, the print shop, the bookstore, the academic resource center, campus police, Center for Research, the college nurse, information services, the tech center, media services, and Dr. Shirley Walker in the music department. Now, to my colleagues, if I did not call your department, please forgive me for not mentioning it. But thank you to all employees, because I cannot do this without you. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Linda. I agree, once we get that new scoreboard above center court there with those four big screens in it all the way around?
Yeah.
I agree.
I have to comment on one thing that so impressed me, and I, since I've been here, it was the first year when Dr. Givens asked all those who were the first in their families to graduate and stand up.
Yes.
That was really powerful, and it, and it really speaks to, to one of the reasons we are here for the community. So, I am so glad Dr. Givens did that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Well done.
President Ash, Mrs. Flunder, and I journeyed to Dodge City, Kansas. What a, what a trip that was for the KACC, Joint Trustee and Counselor Presidents Meeting on Friday and Saturday of last week. It was a very good meeting, I thought. Lots of discussion between the trustees and the presidents. And I'm sure that Mr. Ash will share with you some of the, some of the high points of the meeting. I won't take his thunder. The Endowment Association, you may have noticed, has sent out a nomination form for the 18th Annual Mid-America Education Hall of Fame for Saturday, November 2nd. And so, if there's someone that you'd like to recommend, or some group, organization you'd like to recommend, be sure and get those in before the deadline. Mark your calendars for August 12th, that's when we'll have the grand opening of the Thomas R. Burke Technical Center. There is a committee that will be working with Mr. Bodie to develop the program and the agenda for the day, and more information will, will be coming out, I'm sure, shortly. This year we had graduation on June the 11th at the, we call it one thing, but the official name is the United States Disciplinary Barracks. It was the largest group we've had so far. There were seven graduates from KCKCC and two other graduates. One received a Master of Arts in Theology, and one from another community, two-year institution. It was an exciting day, the Commandant was there. She worked with me to present the diplomas to the students. They wore caps and gowns, it was a really beautiful and emotional ceremony. Very proud that KCKCC offers courses to those students, so that when, hopefully, it will be a life-changing event for them that will change the course of their lives. So we were happy to do that. And they gave an award to the college that will be posted in my office. We have named the new Vice President for Academic Affairs, and I know you've seen that announcement, we got it out so that everybody would know. He will be on board the first Monday in July, and I believe that's the 8th of July. And now Attorney Darrell Winn, sorry about my voice, has a report on the resolution for the board.
Thank you, Dr. Givens. Trustees, am I, trustees, Dr. Givens asked me to have a brief overview of the new concealed carry law, mainly because of a lot of discussions that have been going on around the state. And I have to say that the PowerPoint that is in front of you was actually prepared by one of our own, who's a law clerk for our firm, Ms. Kelsey Long, sitting up here in front, and has done some research on that. I promise not to embarrass her too much and ask her to say a few words, but I'll wait until the end to do that. My purpose today is to talk to you about the Concealed Carry Law, House Bill 2052. The objectives of the law, interesting things here. The legislature acknowledges the need to ensure the safety of its citizens and public buildings. That's what the law is about. And the purpose is to eliminate the restrictions to concealed carry in public buildings where no adequate security measures are in place. And one of the things that was put out on May 16, 2013, by co-chairs of the House Senate Finance and State Affairs Conference Committee, is a, is a letter. And one of the things it said, "The legislature requires that concealed carry licenses be allowed, licensees be allowed to carry their handguns into the public buildings, all public buildings, not protected by adequate security measures." And so, this law was designed to allow people who qualify for concealed carries to be able to carry them unfettered, even in the state buildings unless adequate security measures were in place. Here's what the law means for the college. As a general rule, the college cannot prohibit concealed carry weapons, those who have the license to do so, unless it offers and has adequate security measures in place at all public entrances. And in addition, you have the appropriate signage. And the signage is what you see right there, just the, the strike through with weapon. Here's what's unique about this, all of the doors have to have adequate security measures. Now, there are some exceptions for limited card access, there are all kinds of things that, that can occur. But for now, what you're supposed to do is start thinking about this, because this will be the law. Possible outcomes, one of the things that the board could decide is to remove your no carry signs and allow concealed carries on campus. Two, you could provide metal detectors and security guards at each public entrance, which by statute is the adequate security measure. Or you could utilize the opt-out provision by assessing your buildings and the entrances and establishing a security plan for the buildings.
Mr. Winn, in regards to adequate security, you say bullet point two, is that the only definition of adequate security measures?
Yes, that's the only one that I've been able to find. They're still figuring that out, but for now, metal detectors and guards at each point. Temporary opt-out, you have until January 1st, 2014. In order to do this, you have to provide notice to the Attorney General of the local law enforcement agency, the statute puts in perils, for example, the local sheriff. And there is no security plan or statement of reason necessary for the opt-out requirement, meaning you don't have to have it all in place now. What you have to be able to do is be able to articulate that you want to do that, and then you'll have several months to figure out how you're going to enforce the law. Again, the law is not to place unnecessary restrictions on licensees who have a concealed carry permit, and to allow them in your buildings. And so, the past statements and the past rules that you've had where you prohibited that are now contrary to law. And so, now, the new law will take precedence over that, and the college will have to bring its policies into alignment. And then you must opt out by July 1st, 2013. And to facilitate that, I have before you a resolution, which I would ask that you take action on today, which provides all of the requirements, and meets all of the verbiage, and actually provides the things that you need to do, so that you can spend time now, in the next few months, figuring out what you're going to do next.
Darrell, we have from, to July 2014 to complete it? Or we gotta have it completed 2014, January?
What you have to do right now is state your request indicating you'd like to opt out. You send that to the Attorney General.
I understand that.
And then by January...
How much time have we got?
Well, you, you have until January 1st, 2014, to have your plan in place and indicate what you want to do, and to get your exemption for four years.
For four years? So we got four years to get it done?
Four years to come through the exempt period, yes. But when you say get it done, you're exempted for four years, at which point you are to put in, develop a plan and a scheme for doing that.
Mm-hmm. But have we got four years to do that? Could that be 2018?
The reason you're, you're getting a backwards answer from me is this, the first thing you have to do is notify the Attorney General and the local law enforcement that you want to do that. And then what you do is you spend the next six months, until January 2014, figuring out what that means. And it's more than just, "We don't want to do that." What you have to do is assess your buildings, you have to go through a plan of study, because the law's...
I understand all of that.
Well, then the answer to your question is yes.
I still want to, okay, I just want a yes or no answer of, have we got to the, them four years to get it all together?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm of approval of the resolution. You want me to do something?
Second.
What was that, what was that?
I just think this is really, an issue that we don't want to rush into judgment on. We need to take some time, and I think do that six months of planning. I think the resolution also called for a hearing of the public to allow us to hear from the constituents of our college, and to see how they feel about it. Six months gives us time to do a complete study, have our, our security department give us advice. So, I think six months is certainly warranted, and I support that, that motion.
Okay. I second.
Is the presentation complete, Mr. Winn?
I do have, I have a question in regards to the resolution. There's a motion on it.
Excuse me, I've asked a question, is the presentation complete?
Mr. Chairman, if you look, the next slide is the answer to Mr. Flunder's question. You do have the four-year opt-out, and looking ahead, it's almost complete, let me say this, like in 30 seconds. One of the things that the legislature has indicated is that you should take a look at the Wichita Centric County model, and you have that in front of you. And what they did is, they took a look at 15 factors to help them decide which buildings they were going to allow open concealed carrying, and which ones they were not. And, and the thing I want to point out is that your plan is not just for the college campus in total, it is for the buildings and facilities. And one of the things that Wichita did was they listed factors. And looking at the board's faces, we're not going to go through them, see, we're finished. But, but there are 15 that I would ask the board take a look at to help you decide what you want to do. Mr. Rios, you have a question?
Section 7, it says, "Adequate security measures as contemplated by the Act, and report the results of such comprehensive study to the Board of Trustees by July 1, 2016."
Yes. Yes, Mr. Rios, that's the Board of Trustees.
But July of 2016, is that correct, 2016? Because if we're in 2013, then six months is 2014. Because we're in 2013, then six months is 2014, but then you get additional two years?
It's the report to you by 2016, and then you'll have the 2018, isn't that, am I doing the math right?
Right.
Before you send it to the state. But I would think that you would want the preliminary results to you earlier.
Okay.
Not to the state.
It's 2018.
Just to the trustee.
Just to the trustee.
Yes, Mr. Rios.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
All right.
I just want to add that you might have been better off having Ms. Long give the report.
Are there any additional questions or comments before we call the question?
What did Attorney Long have anything that she wanted to add?
Good answer.
Nothing like judgment.
That completes my report.
Okay, all in favor of adopting the resolution or the motion to adopt the resolution? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes the President's report. She's whispering in my ear because she's quickly losing her voice here. So Dean Marks, item eight, the personnel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to draw your attention to item eight, A1 through 6 for your information, and I'm seeking your approval for item 8B, 1 through 14, plus the amendment.
I have a question, maybe it's from Mr. Nguyen, on the information, 8A number 3, you have to go into, hold that for executive session if I desire information about that?
Yes, Mr. Rios, to protect the privacy interests of the individual involved.
Okay. I would like, I guess, hold 8A number 3.
What are you asking, JD?
I want information about number 8A number 3, and I'm told that that needs to be discussed in executive session.
Do you need, you want to discuss that here or do you need to be in your...
No, executive session, Clyde. It's got to be executive session. So...
Can you add six to that, JD, so I can just ask you a question about it?
Sure. Yes, I, I'm willing to do that. So it'd be items 3 and 6.
So you want to table those until after the executive session, at which time the Board would take action on those items?
Correct.
And so the motion would be to approve Article 8A 1, 2, then 4 and 5.
Correct.
And then the rest of the recommendations.
And then Article B.
And, and, yes. Okay. So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Leila. We'll visit with you soon. All right. Fast forward here. Well, with mixed emotions, item number nine, the Vice President for Academic Affairs, Dr. Aga Joffre.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning.
I have some news that I received after I had submitted my report to you, and it's some really good news. Kansas Board of Regents has started a thing about giving awards for the best institutions that are collecting data. And they gave two awards, one for a four-year institution, which was received by Pittsburgh State, and one for community colleges, which was received by none other than our research department. So I've asked Dr. Son Kim Min to stand up and share with you news of the award and to introduce his staff.
Good morning, trustee members.
Good morning.
Karen Fife, our Director of Institutional Research, would you come out with your staff and then stand by me? We always knew that, you know, our quality of work done in our offices and throughout KCKCC is good, but we didn't know it was award-winning good. And this award is called Data Quality Award, given by the Kansas Board of Regents. And as Dr. Jafar told, that these were the first recipient for the community colleges. I asked the criteria, what was the criteria for this award? They said primarily data quality and timeliness of the timeliness of the reporting. And recently, we've are getting some recognition, not only from the state, but also the federal government. A few weeks ago, we also received a thank you note. I mean, we were receiving thank you notes from the federal government, Department of Education, but something, something really exceptional there. And also, we were recognized by our internal people, the EMD, Enrollment Management Division, kind of recognized one of our staff for doing their excellent services. And, you know, to have a data quality, you have to have the quality data inputted in the system. So this award is given to KCKCC, entire KCKCC, not just to our office, because they know, K-Board know that to have data quality, it's not just from the reporting, the offices, but throughout each campuses, each offices that input the data. So without further explanation, I'll have Karen to explain a little more about this award while I'm showing this award to you guys.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, Karen.
We're pretty excited. You can probably tell. I'd like to introduce the staff of the Center for Research and Community Development. This is Chris Day, he's a research assistant. This is Dr. Mary Grunkie, she's the Assistant Director. Shazia Siddika, who's a research assistant, and Mary Lawless, who is also a research assistant. And, you know, wow, this is the cool nerd equivalent of winning the state championship. We are so excited. To just give you a little bit of background of what we do in terms of submitting data for the state, we submit nine data collections to K-Board, and one of these submissions is the KSPSD, which is the Kansas Post-Secondary Database, which has 12 separate file uploads. And that's just one of the submissions that we do. Another big data collection is iPads, which is federally mandated, but K-Board is the state coordinator of that, so they monitor those iPad submissions as well. And within iPads, there's nine separate files. So in total, I counted up just the other day, because it's just part of what we do, we submit 26 data files to K-Board every year. This data is used to, for a variety of reasons. It assists the state legislatures to decide higher education policy. It assists with the P-20 database and other grant initiatives, Foresight 2020, Perkins Funding, our outcome metrics, reports to the Board of Regents for their data decision-driven making, our performance report, which we're required to do every year. And last, but certainly not at all least, our funding is based on the data that we submit to the state. It's huge. Several years ago, the CRCD, we launched what we called the Data Integrity Initiative. And the goal of this initiative, as Sonki mentioned, was to ensure the quality and accuracy of the data that was entered into Alucia. We knew we had to collaborate with other departments, because all of us are owners and stewards of this data. So we developed a series of systematic edit checks that we send out every month to various departments on campus, and they review those edit checks, and then they make the necessary changes in the system. And when we first started this approach, there were a few folks who thought we were flat-out crazy and probably would let out a sigh whenever they saw one of our names come through on their inbox or saw one of our names come through on their incoming voicemail or phone. But through it all, the dedication, persistence, and lots of chocolate, we got the job done, and we will continue our efforts to ensure the quality and accuracy of our data. Like Sonki mentioned, and like Linda mentioned before, it, this award not only recognizes the CRCD's efforts, but it is Kansas City, Kansas Community Colleges Award. It recognizes the hard work of everybody on campus. We can't do what we do without the assistance of Baz and his team in IT, Dr. McDowell and her team in enrollment management, especially Teresa Holliday, Sherry Neff, Marie Henson, Darla Smuggie, and Katree Robertson. Also, the administrative assistance to all the academic deans, who are responsible for entering all of the information about our course sections in the system. Mary Door in Financial Aid, Marie Branstad or in the Business Office. I mean, there's just a whole host of people that are working behind the scenes, and we can't do what we do without them. So since we won this award this year, we can't win it next year. But some of the members of the CRCD team will be serving on the selection committee for next year's award. But we've got bragging rights for the next 360 days, not that us cool nerds are counting. Thank you very much.
Outstanding. Congratulations, Sonki, Karen, and everyone, all of staff members. We appreciate your labors. We can't overstate it enough, Karen and I both used the word huge. I mean, it's huge, you know, this data getting to K-Board, because that's how they're deciding what our funding levels are and so forth. And it is, it is huge. So congratulations. Well done.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Natasha Elskari now to come up and to update you on our T4E grant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The T4E grant has been moving along at a swift and productive pace. With the help of our advisory board, which includes the Vice President and several deans, we have been able to begin, implement, and complete many projects. We have met with the architects, and the TTE Center will no doubt be a location ideal for our services. Participants will have ample space for seating and check-in, a computer lab and study room, as well as access to workforce partnership. The laser cutter, the half-million-dollar laser cutter, is in place and if you, and ready for the students to use in the fall. I've toured several different welding companies to see this actual machine take, you know, in action. And so our students will be industry-ready when they complete the first and second semesters of the welding program. If you haven't had a chance to see it in person, of course, we have open house, but you can sneak over there if you want to ahead of time. From a project management perspective, we have leased ETO software from Social Solutions with implementation projected for late August, and that will take about two weeks to fully implement and train staff. This software will assist us in serving our students and employers, assisting the staff with streamlined services, as well as meeting the requirements for reporting to DOL. We will be working with Information Services, the Center for Research, and Social Solutions to get the program software up and running. The Department of Labor Point of Contact was transferred from Dr. Tamara Aga Joffre to me in May, and I have, with the leadership of our VP, our outgoing VP, created a seamless transfer as a point of contact. We are really fortunate to have an FPO who is available to actually answer my questions and is timely, for the most part, with his responses. And the FPO assures us that we are progressing as well and that our quarterly reports have been quite impressive. The staff is also growing. We have hired a diverse, talented group of professionals for the following positions: Part-Time Secretary is Wanda Mneer Reed, Institutional Research Associate Karen Taylor, TTE Coordinator Paul Hancock, Advisor Eric Abernathy, and we have Interview for the Multimedia and Online Course Developer. In the coming weeks, we'll be posting for our part-time instructors, the AOK and the Fleet Instructors. T4E numbers are steadily growing, but are somewhat low for our first-year goals. We know that once our staff is housed in the TTE and the new TEC opens, as well as implementing our marketing strategies, we know that we will be able to see an increase to meet our numbers. We are keeping an eye on the numbers and working directly with our third-party evaluator, Evalytics, to ensure that we will meet the requirements we have promised to achieve. Workforce Partnership will have a satellite office within the TTE, and here the community can learn about T4E as an option while seeking employment. There'll just be a wealth of information, resources, and assistance to all those who enter the doors. So we're very excited about that collaboration. KCKCC graphic designer Haley Schornhorst, I might be pronouncing that incorrectly, has created an awesome logo that is reflective of the aim of T4E, and it will appear with all of our literature and email correspondences. We have been working with the marketing firm, Global Prairie, to create our approach for informing potential participants, employers, and informing the community at large about T4E. We will have a presence on the KCKCC website in the coming months, as well as a mobile app that will be a learning resource for not only our T4E participants, but all TACT recipients. So we are really excited about the next phase of T4E, creating team camaraderie with the staff, moving into our new space, collaboration with employers, increased enrollment, and creating a place where participants can successfully complete programs that move them into high-wage, high-demand positions will be the source of great personal and professional joy. It has been a privilege to work here so far, and I really look forward to continuing to be a part of the community that's focused on making life better.
All right, thank you, Natasha. Are there questions or comments?
Yeah. What's your target on enrollment? What are you, I mean, are you trying to get to?
Well, for the, there, over the course of the entire grant, it's 1,089 participants.
And how are you recruiting individuals to be in the program?
Right, we are recruiting, that's what we're working with, directly with the marketing program, to go to locations, to where our target audiences may actually be hiding out. So we're also doing email correspondences with partners that we already have through the college, so that they know about the programs and help us to identify potential students as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
You said go into the local community. Can you name some places?
Well, our TTE Coordinator, Paul Hancock, is working directly with our employers and working with Rich Piper in the Technical Education Center already to kind of transfer. And then he's building up partnerships as well. So workforce partnership is one of the places where we've tried to identify students. That is the, that is the, in the beginning stages for us. We're just first trying to get the program up off the ground, and then our recruiting efforts will be a little heavier once we're actually in place. So we attended the Mark KC Manufacturing Tours with Marvin's office, Dr. Hunt's office, and made a lot of connections with some of the local high schools, not only on this side, but on the Kansas City, Missouri side, because a lot of people don't even know anything about what KCKCC offers. And of course, with the new tuition discount, we're trying to work directly with, with students coming directly out of high school, as well as identifying veterans and TAA-affected workers.
Okay. Okay. I'll wait, I'm waiting, see.
Okay.
Yes, I'll have more information for you in the coming months.
Okay. Quickly.
Yes.
Thank you, Natasha.
Because we're looking for new students, not ones that was already contacted by workforce. So it would be good to know some new contacts, not the same ones we've been, and workforce... Okay.
Yes. Well, because our grant specifically is focused on veterans and TAA-affected workers, that's the, that's the, that's what our target, the audience we're really supposed to target. A lot of those populations are already underemployed or unemployed. We're also trying to find people who are working, but we definitely want to spend a little bit of time targeting our, our audience of veterans and TAA-affected workers. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Natasha. Okay, I had prepared a report for you, which actually I had prepared it for the new Vice President, so that, I called it Context and Continuity, just so that he would have some background when he came on board with some of the projects that we...
First of all, I would appreciate you sharing the report for the new vice president of Academic Affairs. As always, Tamara, you're very organized, very specific, detailed, and I think I can speak for all of you, very appreciative of that organization and of your dedication over these past many years of service to our institution. But as always, I do have a couple of questions.
Hi.
On your number 14, is there a listing of all of the institutions where we have articulation agreements with and the reverse transfer agreements?
Yes, sir. They're on the website. If you go to the college website and go to Academics, and then scroll down to Programs, click on that, and then you will see articulations. And what we have done with the help of Lisa Klein, our webmaster, we've done general MOUs, and then also we have some that are discipline-specific. So, you can go to the specific disciplines and see some of those articulations. But every time that we do an articulation, or a reverse transfer, or an MOU with an institution, we put it up on the website after it's been signed.
Okay. You speak to dual and concurrent enrollment?
Yeah.
And the preference being dual. I just, if you would, just, oh, no, a new position that I've just gotten, I want to make sure that I'm clearly understanding why the preference for dual over concurrent.
Because with concurrent enrollment, what we are doing, sir, is hiring high school teachers, most of whom do not have a master's degree in the discipline. They may have a master's degree, but they're only required to have up to 18, 18 credit hours in the discipline. Our adjuncts are required to have a minimum of a master's in the discipline. So, it's a question of the credentials, number one. I always prefer that they have a master's in the discipline. And number two, we have more control over the adjuncts that we send into the high schools than we do over the high school teachers. We actually evaluate our adjuncts. We cannot do that with the high school teachers, even though we are hiring them as quote-unquote adjuncts to teach our classes.
I guess that's the part that I'm wanting a little more understanding about, is I would think because we are in fact employing them as adjuncts, that we would have at least a partnership in the evaluation process of the teacher. Is that not the case?
Well, what we do is we have what are called instructional coordinators, which is our full-time faculty, go out to the high schools, meet with the adjunct, with the high school teachers to make sure that they are using our syllabus and our textbook. But actually having students, the way we do here, evaluate the instructors, we cannot do that to.
I see.
So, my preference is always for dual.
Although we pay them, don't we?
What? Excuse me?
Although we pay them?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. But what is happening now is that we are offering more and more classes under dual enrollment than we are under concurrent, which is my preference, because it is then our adjuncts that are going out to the high school locations. And I also think that it works better with high school students to have our adjuncts go out to the high school locations, because then it's not their usual teacher. So, they, they get more of a feel for college. So, that's, I've been pushing for dual enrollment for the last couple of years, and it's, it's gone up exponentially. It really has.
On number 21, just, will we be getting, or do you feel that we are in need of an update on the developmental education, just how that's coming along?
I think it's coming along nicely. I would recommend, I won't be here, but I would recommend an update probably in early fall, maybe.
Early fall?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a note of that. I appreciate that. And then, on number 22, did we not receive a date for our HLC visit? Is that the November, didn't we get a November date?
Okay. There are, there are a couple of HLC visits.
Okay.
The one for November that you're referring to, that is for the big accreditation. And HLC contacted us, it's going to be in 2015, and they gave us a couple of dates for options, and Dr. Givens chose November, and I can't remember which day it was, but I'm sure it's in here somewhere.
Do you remember?
And the, well, I've got it in here somewhere. Hang on.
I didn't see it. That's why I'm asking. Do you?
It was early in the month.
It's early in the month.
It's early in the month. It was just before Thanksgiving, and it's, it was in 2015. I didn't write it down, but I know Dr. Givens has it. The onsite visit for the Thomas R. Burke Technical Education Center, they haven't given us a date for that one yet. But they will come and visit us. Now, all the paperwork has been filed, the application has been approved, and I heard back from HLC saying they approved the application and the teach-out plan that I had to submit. But they will be coming out, they'll send a team out to visit the center after we move in. So, but I, they haven't given us a date for that one yet.
So, they gave us the one.
Yes, for the 2015, but not for this one, yeah.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah. Because the 2015 is the major one.
Right.
Yeah. This one, they'll, just as they did a couple of years ago when they came to the auto technology, auto collision site.
Right.
Yeah. They do like a one-day tour.
Okay. And then, finally, on your news and updates, Dr. Nancy Thomas, that was a great recognition there, but is there any thing to report on our efforts on having fire science on campus? Were you anywhere?
Fire science on campus? We have a fire science program.
Well, my understanding was that there was some discussion about, you know, they have, at the old city hall, I guess what I call it, I don't know if they have a better name for it, you know what I'm talking about, Don, and the.
Fire headquarters?
The fire headquarters, and actually trying to have some of the, some of what the classes go on there, actually over, over here.
I don't know, is Dr. Kramer here? Yeah. Ed, do you know anything about this? I think Trastirios is asking about, are we going to be able to do some of the classes here, offer the classes here?
Right. Currently, no. What we're, what we've been doing is, is working with them to offer a fire academy, similar to the police academy.
Right.
And what we have talked about trying to do is after we get into the tech center, it won't involve this necessarily, but with, with regards to some of the fire science classes, because we have some props that we've gotten, trying to look at ways to work with Cliff on scheduling some of the areas where we can have classes meeting during times that, where they might be like breaking down the door, so that it's not in a classroom here on campus that they're doing that. You know? And, because it's a, it's a prop, but, but it's pretty loud. So, what, we figured there's, there are classrooms, and Cliff and I have been talking about this a little, where lab and, and class time are happening, we could maybe schedule in part of those things to happen there. And I meet fairly regular with part of the, with Chief Jones and, and some of the other chiefs in the, in the fire department and discuss items with them. But right now, the academy going the way it is is probably the way we're going to keep it until we can kind of figure out what, they, they would like to do some other joint ventures and things that, I'm not sure where we are in a position to do those yet. Everybody wants a new building. And so, I, you know, I'm not sure where some of that is, but we'll keep looking at it.
All right. Yeah, well, I was cognizant of them wanting to update, modernize some of their training.
Right.
Of course, that, you know, the concept of maybe being a public safety center, you know, is something perhaps the board and others need to, to discuss as a possibility in the future.
Right. And we, and we have talked, and we've met several times on it since I've been, actually over the last three years since I've been dean, it's just trying to figure out how to integrate something like that is, is always a challenge. But we, the recognition Nancy's received is great in that we just keep trying to push forward what we're, what we're doing and, and really make it a forefront. And one of the things I tell Nancy is that, you know, I see it as a big plus that we are on campus with the firefighter program, because a lot of the students that are here on campus see it. When you have a group of students going across the top of the library roof, you know, during the middle of the day, or going down to the, to the building to do something, that, that's, that's a good draw for those students. And so, I, I think we have to make a presence at the tech as well, in a lot of ways, just because of the way things are, but I'm glad that we're able to do that. I think it's all one integrated campus. It's a great approach.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the information.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer.
And thank you for your answer.
Okay.
And for the report again.
All right. And any other questions?
Comments or questions for Tamara? Once again, Tamara, on behalf of the board, we wish you well as you move forward, and thank you sincerely for your many, many years of dedicated service to the college, the community, and to higher education, you know, all the way around.
Thank you very much.
It's been a pleasure to know you and work with you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Brian, you want to follow that?
Can we get approval of my report, please?
I have approval of my president's report.
Second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Brian.
Thank you.
Thanks. I love following that. I have a couple things. First thing I'd like to do, and it's not on the report, I'd like to introduce the new head basketball coach, Kansas City Kansas Community College, Kelly Newton. Kelly's coming to us, Kelly's coming to us from Neosho, played at Wyandotte, played at Neosho, played at University of Oklahoma. I've allowed him to understand that Nebraska-Oklahoma issues, but we'll get past that. Coached at, coached at Midland College in Texas, Northern Alabama, did some professional time and some other time, and then is current owner of a semi-professional ladies' basketball team in the league, and has finally seen the light and came back home to Wyandotte County. And we're thrilled. We're thrilled to have Tony, or to have Kelly back in Kansas City, and especially on our staff. So, I wanted to introduce Kelly.
Well, first of all, well, do you have anything you'd like to say?
And we want to know, is it zone or man-to-man? That's what we really.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
As you just heard, my name is Kelly Newton. Funny thing, my wife's name is Kelly Newton as well, so. I'm spelled E-Y, she's spelled L-Y, so. But very excited about the opportunity, very thankful for the opportunity to come back home and be at a, a great institution. I know I mentioned before, I love the direction that the college is going. I know growing up here, there was a period there where you didn't see or hear what was going on about KCKCC. And during this time, over the last, you know, six, seven, eight years, our presence, you just don't hear about it, but you also see it in the community, and I think that's very important. I always wanted to come back and get back to the community, and here's an opportunity to, to do that. I definitely thank Tony and Valerie for, for the opportunity as well to be here and, you know, just really excited to answer questions, zone or man? A little bit of both.
All right. All right.
A little bit of both. Hopefully, we can just score enough points to beat the other team, right?
There we go.
Little combination of everything, but very excited about the opportunity and, and real, real honored to be here.
Okay. Excellent. Welcome aboard, Kelly. Thank you very much. All right. Good?
As good as I could do to follow that.
That was pretty good.
Yeah. Yesterday, Piper Jeffrey offered our bonds out, and we got the final notification last night back. Final interest rate, average interest rate across the 14 years of bond will be 2.8% up a half a percent from a month ago. But the process takes time, and we've had them out there. Yesterday was the first day they could be offered. I sent to you all in on email, and you have here. Today, we need the final authorization to proceed and to authorize entering into the lease purchase agreement. That's the, the agreement that puts us on the line that says we're, we're committed to this $5.6 million sold here, and it's the final step in the bond process. It has gone as good as we could get it to go, and as timely as we could get it to go. Special thanks to Darrell, you have his, his legal opinion here, to John Haas from Ramson Financial, who's here today, who has run this through and twisted a few arms to lower some, some rates for us. We did come back from standard and poor again, double A, steady and stable, and since there were a couple other community colleges that were A-plus but not double A, John twisted some people about three-tenths of a percent on some interest, and we, he earned his keep that day, I promise. Gilmore and Bell has been the, the legal counsel on the bonds. They provided all of this. Darrell's reviewed it, and so, today I, I need to ask for that resolution involved there to be read, and then to authorize Dr. Givens and Don to sign innumerable copies of innumerable documents, a site lease, a, another lease, the final agreement lease. And so, I ask for your consideration of the final approval on the bonds.
Mr. Chairman, I move a resolution authorizing the Kansas City Kansas Community College, Wyandotte County, Kansas, to enter into a supplemental lease purchase agreement for the proceeds of which to be used to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, and installing certain educational building improvements on the college campus in Kansas City, Kansas, and to approve the execution of certain documents in connection therewith.
Second. All right. We have a motion to second. Is there any question or discussion either for Brian or anyone else present on this issue? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
The motion carries. All right. Thank you.
No, thank you. Appreciate that.
And then, my report, my monthly report was included, and I would attempt to answer any of the questions you have for me. I would, if, I'll wait for questions.
One of the things I would like to highlight, and there's lots of highlights up here, great work going on, but I thought to highlight one thing, every month, Michael Kimbrough and his crew are picked up.
An entire television studio. Move it down here. Now, they keep telling me that shakes and rattles it, and you need some $500,000 improvement, but we'll get to that later. But they come down here every month to do this. But we also run our television station, and if you look on page six and seven of my report, there's two things about what happened in, in our television station. Our program Conversations is now in 15 cities and 10 states, being picked up across the country for conversations with, I was going to say important people in Wyandotte County, but one day they did interview me, so they lowered that standard a little. But for people in Wyandotte County who are making a difference, Johnson County Community College picked it up, and we appreciate that. 215,000 people access to that, to that program and to that, 75 segments. I think it's quiet, it's hidden, not a, doesn't get spoken about, but a special thank you to Michael and his crew, and to Robin Givens, who is the host of Conversations. And then, they do that, and then they turn around and turn this into.
Robin Torres. Have you adopted her? Robin Givens.
Robin Torres. I apologize.
I didn't know.
But then they turn around and turn this into a television program that carries also. And then Darrell Stuckey, the football player from KU, I didn't know he also used to play at Washington High School.
Yes.
Came in, did some public address, public service announcements for us, a commercial, special commercial. special commercial for our victim services program at the college, and we were very pleased to have him in. And so, one for United Way, one for the school and the public service announcement. Great guy. So I wanted to call, if there's no other questions, special attention to Michael and his crew's accomplishments for the last month or so.
Good. Absolutely.
I've got one question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the Leavenworth Center.
What page? Where are you at?
Well.
Page 12? Page 12. Leavenworth Center. Okay?
The ads for the credit hours was 254, and the drops was the same amount, 254.
It is either coinci, it is not that the same student added and/or dropped a class, even though many of them do. We count a drop. If you come in and you have a class that doesn't fit your schedule anymore, and you drop it, and you turn at the very same moment, find one that does fit your schedule, and you add it, that would be the same. But I suspect, ma'am, this is coincidence.
Yes. If you look at the previous two years, it's just, this is the first year they were the same.
Okay. Vice President Bodie, I was wondering if it would be possible, perhaps next month, if we could have just a brief overview of what we present to our students in the new student orientation, just so we kind of have an idea, and then of course would be made cognizant of what we do. Appreciate, give some orientation about our orientation.
Can trustees attend when they have that, when they have the one for next year? Can we show up?
Show up at what, ma'am?
At the orientation.
Oh, yes, ma'am. You're welcome.
You have to get a pass from the president that you control.
And Dr. McDowell is shaking her head, yes, so, yes, you're welcome.
Okay. What's the date for next year?
June 23rd.
No, I'm talking about when the, the school starts then. And August, you mean?
Yeah, I had a question on that, too, maybe Dean McDowell. Are these the only two orientations that will be for students before next school year?
Can you come forward and help us, Dr. McDowell?
And I guess the reason I ask the question, is I think, I think tomorrow, as I mentioned this before, the research started to show how important it is that students go through an orientation of some kind before they start class, and the success rate really increases for those students who do go through the orientation program. And I just, I mean, these are pretty early. I mean, it's still several weeks, and I just worry there's going to be other opportunities for students coming next fall to go to an orientation.
Yes. What we're doing this time is starting this process or reactivating the process. Initially, they were just for parents, and so now we're partnering with the Student Advising Center, and we're going to be doing orientations. We have talked about offering a series, not only those in June, but looking at offering some in July, and again in August. So what they're doing right now is just piloting this reactivation process to find out participation and interests, and if they need to tweak them to get information out. So there'll be several sessions going on, but yeah, our hope is that we'll have maybe six or 12 of them that are going on all throughout the year.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Yes. And yes, you may attend, Ms. Flunder.
I just want a date of when you have them.
Okay. I will make sure we get those for the fall.
Thank you.
When we have them available.
Are you going to limit the number she can attend?
Yeah, we'll make sure she gets a pass for them.
By the way, Dr. McDowell. I just wanted to recognize you for your report. I thought your report was excellent. Really good information, and I appreciate it.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
You must got a different one than I got.
No comment. I have approval of Vice President Bodie's report.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second to accept Vice President Bodie's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Item 11, Finance.
Yes, and I ask your approval of the payment of the bill under 11A.
And reviewed by Finance Committee, recommend approval of payment of the bill.
Second. All right. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
And again, I ask your approval of the financial reports under 11B.
Finance Committee has reviewed the financial reports. It's still depressing, our T-bill rate not going up. Extender's report, May is traditionally a little heavier in expenses, so there was nothing unexpected in that. On our cumulative budget report, we are at 7%. It's normally 8. But again, our costs in the construction is really what's kind of led to that. Frankly, thinking just being a percent off is probably extremely, extremely a good position to be in at this juncture. Also, on our electrical usage was down in May, but of course, the cost per kilowatt was up, so you will not see the savings that we're looking to get from our energy survey and work, but we do appreciate the conservation efforts of all staff, and certainly advocate for the continuation of being conscious of saving as much energy as possible. That is the report, and recommend approval of the financial report.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. I have a question. We don't often see a negative balance on the cumulative budget report, but we did this time in the scholarship. I just wanted to just enlighten us on that for our clarification.
There's a great deal to do with us covering from the board scholarship fund out-of-state athletes who we didn't raise enough money to cover. And we have to cover inside the account. We have to close the account, pay the student's record, and that's where it came from. We're still working with Tony, working backwards.
Okay. All right.
We're confident that will improve.
Which athlete, Ms. Flunder is asking, is it across all athletic programs, or?
Yes, ma'am. We have a couple programs who are still short, but it's across every program, across the spectrum.
Okay.
I got a question.
Mm-hmm.
Is Developmental, all Development, Inc., is that where English is a second language? Is that the lease on that building?
Could you say that again?
Yeah, speak up a little bit.
The Development, Inc., is that the English is a second language? Is that the lease on that building over there?
Ma'am, that's a lease in Leavenworth.
This is in Leavenworth. Okay. Which is the one?
It used to be Greenamire Reynolds or whatever, but they changed the name to Development, Inc.
Oh, they changed names almost?
Right.
Okay.
That's good.
All right. And the fifth, the UniSource is the one state?
Copy machines.
Is it the building on state?
UniSource are for copyers, ma'am.
Yeah.
These are just copies.
Baseline is the $9,000 to baseline. That is the 78th and State property that we lease. The next one is Leavenworth. The next two are for copiers, and the Lang is for the big print machine and the print shop. So that's what those leases are for.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of accepting the financial report?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you. And then I ask for your approval of 11C, 1 through 6.
Finance Committee has reviewed recommendations and moves approval.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any question?
I got, okay, is this Blackboard really a Blackboard, or is it something else?
Blackboard is the name of a company, ma'am. Blackboard is the name of a company.
Two Blackboards. Not four Blackboards.
Okay. And the name of the company is Blackboard?
Yes, ma'am.
Where is it located?
Faz, help me. Worldwide.
Somewhere on the East Coast.
They're kind of like Dell or Lucian.
I've never heard of them, so, okay.
Other questions or comments? All in favor of accepting the recommendations?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Committee reports. Item 12.
Ash, you make it first, and I'll make it second, whatever you leave out.
Well, as far as KACC goes, Dr. Givens mentioned that we were in Dodge City, whenever that was, the weekend before last, that goes with it. Seventh and eighth.
Seventh and eighth.
For the quarterly meeting and the annual new trustee orientation meeting, there were a number of new trustees from around the state that were present. Obviously, we didn't have any newly elected trustees, so we didn't have any new trustees attend that portion of it. The meetings were good and productive. The focus of the meetings generally between the presidents and the trustees included moving forward with, and how we develop a legislative agenda, how we interact particularly with K-BOR, and the things that K-BOR is seeking. And Karen did a great job explaining all of the data that individual colleges submit, and a little bit about how K-BOR uses that data for decisions on funding, particularly how they're going to fund the various formulas. So the presidents and group, small group of presidents and trustees men in a visioning session, and worked on developing that agenda. Tomorrow, we'll be happy to hear that it's going to include a heavy emphasis on pushing dual enrollments with the universities, between the community colleges and the universities, as well as community colleges with the, you know, the high schools, the K-12s, the high school students, for efficiency. We're going to ask them to fund the eight, the tiered funding at $8 million. We're going to seek them to fully fund the governor's proposal with regard to Senate Bill 155, and the reimbursement, and the payment to the colleges for the high school students that come to the Tech Center. And so our legislative agenda is going to be pretty narrow, fairly focused on, of course, you know, the key funding issues. There are going to be some new regents appointed by the governor this year, and so we'll have some orientation education due with the new regents, develop those relationships with them and so forth, hopefully try to get those that are at least in our area or close to our area out to the campus here, to the Tech Center, to see what's going on, the grand opening of the Tech Center, and all those kinds of things. And there was some other miscellaneous business that was conducted as well. I moved out of the chair position for KACC into the position of past president, so I'll still serve on the executive committee for another year, but in a different role. So, Mary Ann, anything you care to add to that?
You did real well.
Thank you. You trained me.
I have a question. I know they had a group that was working on determining a better way to measure success in community colleges. Any progress on that?
Well, you know, there's email flowing as recently as early, earlier this, or late last week regarding, you know, some input from the presidents. A specific term that, you know, that we're trying to get K-BOR to understand is what college-ready means for the community colleges. And I know that a few of the presidents and a number of them have joined in and support are in favor of adopting the ACT definition of, you know, what college-ready is, because it would be universal, and it would be easy to quantify and, you know, qualify what that means and so forth. So that's heavy in the discussion right now, but, you know, K-BOR keeps trying to, in essence, force the definition that the universities utilize, and that quite frankly doesn't work for us, you know, on many levels. So that's some of the, that's some of the prominent discussion right now, right, regarding that. Any other committee reports, and if Mary Ann doesn't have anything to add to that one?
Just real briefly, Don, the Policy Committee did meet Mary Ann, and I met with Dean Marks, and you have that package next time, Leo, do you think you'll ever, oh, you have to have College Senate first, don't you? We've done our work with it. We've reviewed the policy changes, and it goes now to the College Senate for their review, and somewhere down the road, it'll come to us for our review, so it'll probably be a while, though.
When will that be? Because I thought, I thought we was going to get it for June.
Well, we need, you know, some additional things this last meeting that Dr. Thadee looked at, and having Nora sitting in the office, somebody sitting in the office, our expense members. So I would say, you know, we should be ready.
It's in the pipeline. Okay. Good.
But we have to remember that many of the members of the College Senate are faculty, and they're not here in the summer.
Yep.
I've got one more question. We did add the smoking policy, too.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Other committees?
I just have a real quick report on the Advancement Council. Our last meeting, we introduced and did an orientation for a few of the new council members. I think two were not able to be there. And of course, our, we're promoting as many of the Advancement Council members to attend a preview that Brian has graciously agreed to the week before the grand opening, so that our Advancement Council members can serve as ambassadors and be fairly familiar with the facility. And that's, that's one of the things that, that we're looking to for those council members to get that word out to the community, and also to encourage in that week-long attendance at the grand opening. So we're now going to move to every other month and really structure our meetings in advance. And certainly, one of the things we want to do is hear from different departments exactly what they're doing, so the council is continuously updated on different aspects of the college. That's it.
Good. All right. Good. Okay. All right. I guess that will do it for committee reports. Move agenda item 13, miscellaneous. And we're needing an executive session, so we'll need a motion.
Are we not? How long, Darrell?
15 minutes to, under the attorney-client privilege, to discuss matters deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship, and also, I believe, under the personnel exception to protect the privacy interests of individuals.
to protect the privacy interests of the individuals involved based upon the trustees pulling of the items under the Article 8A, I think, 3 and 4, 2 and 6. And to discuss possible acquisition of real estate with action to follow. Correct. Make that 20 minutes, Ben. Move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will adjourn temporarily to executive session. All right, we're back in, uh, open session here, and we have unfinished business under personnel that.
Moving acceptance, wait, I think it is an information item, of, uh, items, uh, 8A, 3 and 6.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, those information items are accepted.
I, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, the Board of Trustees approve, uh, President and Vice President, uh, to, um, pursue the purchase of, um, property at 68th and State Avenue.
Second. All right, motion in the second, is there further discussion? Question?
Is that specific enough?
No, it would be to approve the purchase of the property in accordance with the previously established guidelines and authorize them to do so, because you've already been the major part. What you're doing is approving the final execution of the terms. Okay, so move.
We don't need a more specific address?
Yeah.
It's Tech 1 Plaza, or Tech, Tech 2, um, I can get, I'll have to run to my office to get this specific, but it is the remainder of the Tech 2 property plat is what it says.
In the 6800 block of State Avenue. How's that?
Cause Murray Rhodes did that, and we had to made it, and they replatted the whole thing as Tech 2, and they left that corner as Tech 2 remainder.
I'd just like official record on it, show exactly what we hired. I think Brian's, what Brian said is right.
I'll get the official, um, the legal description.
Legal description.
Wait in a minute, yeah.
Okay, and that's a friendly amendment, JD's accepted, and is it, I think, the second still stands, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, is there anything else under miscellaneous?
Yes.
Yes.
Each of you have at your place?
Yes.
Uh, this Havana, um, Jazz Festival Tour. Kansas City, Kansas Community College has been invited to be a part of that and to travel outside the country. I believe that has to be board approved. One of the things that, um, we'd like to do is work with the city to ask the Kansas City, Kansas Unified Government to, um, travel with, if this is approved, and make this a sister city, a sister country, or, uh, to establish a relationship with them. That was one of the ideas that was suggested by the, the, um, the members of the Jazz program.
And the funding for this is?
They will, the students and the faculty will be responsible for raising, uh, the funding, um, I don't know if there's any college funding available for, there is for faculty travel, um, there is funding for that, that is approved, but it won't be enough to do all of this. The numbers I didn't bring with me, uh, for how much it will cost per person, and they've asked if there would be board members or administrators who would also like to go to a company.
At their own expense?
At their own expense.
At their own expense. But what you're asking us for now is specifically to approve if they can get all of that put together for us to approve, uh, our students and faculty members to travel outside the country.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
For this event. The Havana, that's in Cuba, Jazz Festival. All right, we have move, move, a motion to approve their request.
As I'm, I just want to make sure I'm clear on the motion, that as long as the stipulations are met.
I think they're requesting right now that we give approval to travel outside the country.
Travel outside the country.
The funding and all that, I think, still has to be.
That it's okay for them to move forward and begin to plan for, uh, raising the funds and, and doing all the things necessary.
Okay.
To travel in December, December 18th through December 23rd.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I was, we have motion in the second, any additional comment or question? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so, motion carries, they go forward with their planning.
Okay.
Miscellaneous, uh?
Oh, special meeting. Uh, need to, uh, move that we have a special meeting of the Board of Trustees on June 27th, or a time to be determined through, uh, the assistant to the, uh, President's, uh, office, uh, for, uh, business.
Most, most approval of the minutes.
Yeah, for, for business, uh, uh, I, uh, end of the year items and approval of this board meeting's minutes.
And that was June 27th?
27th, yes. And I thought you had a time, uh, before or, or earlier than or at noon on that day. I, I know that there was, I, noon doesn't work for me, but that doesn't mean that others can. I would either, either have it like around 10 o'clock or around the, uh, 1:30, 2 o'clock hour. I have a community meeting at my school, a new school, and I have to attend that, and I know you had, had a meeting, so I don't know what time it's right.
Okay, we have motion.
Second?
And a second? The time to, the time to be determined. Page will coordinate via email. So, we've got a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Approved. Un, okay, unfinished business, trustee Maddox.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring forward an issue we discussed several months ago on the purchase of iPads for the Board of Trustees. I passed out a document earlier and the figures were a little off, but, uh, I just passed out another one with the figures corrected, so I'm, um, making a motion for the purchase of, of, um, seven iPads at a total cost of $4,729, um, and included in that is, uh, two iPads with cellular access, uh, with an annual fee of $840, um, annually. Included in the packet that I, I passed out were two software packages that we could potentially use, but I'm recommending that we purchase the iPads and then, uh, demo the, um, the, uh, software that, that I'm proposing, and then decide on software at a later time.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in the second, is there a question or discussion? Once again, the, the purpose of this would be so that we could essentially move toward eliminating this, and, um, we could go paperless, if you will, uh, with all of the documentation provided to the trustees for board meetings, special meetings, you know, et cetera, communication and so forth.
All right, any other comment or question?
With training to be ongoing.
With training to be, with training to be ongoing.
I move that he has a seat right up here. And, uh, he ought to be just close, yes.
Yeah.
Have to develop his sign language.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Uh, and I'd just like to say, I'd just like to mention, uh, what a gratifying feeling it is to come onto the campus since we've opened the athletic complex and see all of the people. Um, my son is currently in the driver's ed class in the evenings, and so I've been on the campus quite a bit for the last couple of weeks, and whether you come in the morning or in the evening, uh, to see all the people on the track and, um, around to see the various groups, uh, there was a tremendous amount of activity here Saturday evening with the Women's Soccer League and the baseball games going on, and the community at the community college. I mean, it is really gratifying to see the fruition of all of that, uh, work and so forth. So, uh, I think congratulations to everyone and, um, congratulations to the community, uh, for this wonderful resource that you allow us to, to, to work to provide here, so.
Let alone the income generated.
Yes, and, and Brian's, you know, Brian's efforts particularly, you know, in the leadership and oversight of all of that, uh, project stuff, you know, and, and everything there, uh, this stuff doesn't just happen, and Brian has a lot of great assistance and everything else, but somebody's got to oversee it and somebody's got to lead it and plan it and, you know, all of that kind of thing, and so Brian, I, I hope you're as gratified as I am when you see that stuff, because it's, it's impressive.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add that.
We'll go right down the road, just a second here.
I've heard several comments about campus security, and people are really, very, very, very pleased with campus security, and they feel really comfortable on campus and feel really secure, uh, that, that the campus police is, is there and they're visible.
Point well taken, Chief Snyder and all of his staff. Um, that's why the people are here, here, they feel safe, you know, and secure being here. Mary Ann?
I just want to add to both, that, uh, check us out some roller seats to add to the complex.
Check us out some roller seats, okay, all right.
Cause that crowd is growing, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I heard you make a mention of, uh, your son, driver's ed, is that right?
That's correct.
Has he been, has it been, is that coming through the college?
Yes, he's enrolled in the continuing ed program that Jim Hathaway instructs, and, uh, he's got his learner's permit, so he turns 15 next month, and he's in the, he's in the class. There are about 25 students in this particular session, and, um, there's about 25 or so in every session. I mean, it fills up all, all of the time.
I wonder why they, I wonder why they were telling me that they didn't have. I have a granddaughter that I've been trying to get into driver's ed, they tell me they don't, we don't have it here at the college. I wonder why they would tell me that we do not have it.
Contact Rosemary Lishka over at Continuing Ed, and she'll navigate you through it. How old is she?
16.
Yep, well, she should, if she has a learner's permit, she should, pardon me?
Oh, I was just going to say, it's not offered through the regular college program, it's through continuing ed.
Yeah, it's through continuing ed.
That's probably why people would say, no, we don't offer it.
So, that's why I'd say contact Rosemary, cause she'll help you step right through that. But I, you know, it fills up, and so, you know, this is June class, I enrolled him in March, I think, or something like that, so.
Okay.
Get, get in early, cause it fills up.
Right, and while, while I got the floor, I'm trying to figure, why would, I have a birthday here not too long ago, and I got a cake, and you all just tried to eat it up, and then another dude have a birthday here a couple of days ago, and he don't even open the lid up to let nobody have it. I'll bring my coffee cup down here, and the coffee is goddamn cold, drink the coffee with the, the cakes still sitting over here to my left. You all know who I'm talking about?
Happy birthday, Wendell. Happy birthday. I think, I think that's a, I think that's a backhanded compliment, I think.
Kathy, did you have anything?
Well, I just, once again, I, I was really impressed with the number of entities that were renting the facilities, and it would be, uh, great to get like, I don't know, like a quarterly report, something about, you know, the income that's generated, uh, is that?
Got it?
I, I, I think, you know, every once in a while, most people are just wonderfully complimentary, but every once in a while, people go, oh, sir, our tax dollars, and I'm saying, you know, not only is it a wonderful asset for the community, but it's also generating income to go back into the college, and it'd just be nice to have sort of a, a ballpark figure, far in the fun, um, about what we're generating and how that's increasing, or, I don't know.
Good.
I'd really appreciate that.
Wendell?
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to congratulate and recognize our colleague who has recently been promoted from a principal at an elementary school to Harmon High School, Mr. J.D. Reals. Yes, congratulations.
All right, is there any other, now, unfinished business?
Move for adjournment?
All right, motion to adjourn. Move. And, was that a second, Clyde?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? We are adjourned.
All right.